The following was recorded in front of a live studio audience at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. This is the United Podcast Network.
The following program is closed captioned for the thinking impaired.
By tomorrow, I will rule the world.
You think he's gone? He's not gone. That's the whole point. He's never gone.
Is this some radical new therapy?
You see?
New start, press any key. Where's the any key?
Welcome. You've got mail.
Hey, my attention.
Well, I must have not been paying attention when you were just talking to me. Do you think that you could repeat the question? And I listen more attentively.
We're trying.
There must have been something in all of that nothing that wasn't quite so easy to see. And I must have missed something when you were just talking to me.
Oh, boy.
I must have not been paying attention when you were busy slamming the door. I guess the things that passed.
All right, it looks like we're up and running. I don't know how we figured it out, but we did. A little bit of technical difficulty. Hi, I'm Tom Duggan here at the Paying Attention Podcast. Hi, at Top Two Guys Smoke Shop at the Studio 21 Podcast Cafe. Want to thank Dave Garofalo for giving us the opportunity to do a podcast here every week. And we also want to thank our sponsors because first of all, Ed, our fine, fine producer, he gets paid like a million five a year, so we really have to ramp up on the sponsorships to make sure that we can pay for his time. Climate Design Systems, if you have a problem with heating, if you have a problem with plumbing, if you have a problem with air conditioning, I know winter's coming now. It's starting to get cold at night. You might want to make sure that you check your boil or your heater, whatever that you have called Climate Designs System. One of my favorite people in the world, Jana, Jana, I always get yelled at. No, it's Jana. Jana, Gina Zany Pashi, who's running for school committee. And I've actually endorsed Gina Zany Pashi mostly because she's running on a poll so nobody can yell at me. There's five people in that race and there's six open seats. Martinos Towing, they've been very good friends of the, of the Paying Attention Podcast. They've been very good friends of the Valley Patriot. And every year when we do our scholarship drive in March for our Valley Patriot Anniversary Bash, they always kick in money to help the kids go to college from Lawrence High School. So we certainly appreciate that. And Royal Screen Printing, they've printed all of our Valley Patriot t-shirts. I was supposed to wear one today, but unfortunately my, my shirts that I have, I have three of them there all at the laundry. And our good friend Angelo over there, you know Angelo? We haven't heard from him there for a while over there.
I know Angelo.
Angelo from A&amp;M Auto Body over there. Something happens to your car, you bring it over to him, he fixes it all up. It'd be like brand new. Tonight, we have the at-large debate for the city of Methuen. There are three open seats. And at-large means citywide, means no matter what district you're in, you can, you get to vote in this race. You get, you can choose up to three people. You can vote up to three people, but you don't have to vote for three people. If you've got one person that you like, you can just vote for that one person. That's called a bullet vote. And that's kind of like giving that one person three votes. They don't really get three votes in the tally at the end, but you've taken two votes away from someone else. This is one of those races that is not really all that talked about because they didn't have a primary, so they didn't get a lot of attention. We gave them attention here. We gave them the debate before the primary. And so we want to make sure that we give them as much time as we possibly can. We can go a little over tonight, right? Because of the technical difficulties.
I don't see why not. I owe you that much.
That's, that's true. That's a given how much money he makes. How could he say no, right? To my left, we, to the far, my far left, your far right, we have David Borogad. They call him DJ Borogad. Stop doing that because they're going to confuse you with the other DJ. You're really well liked. He's not really all that well liked. You don't want to lose votes by calling himself DJ.
They've called me that since I was like a week old. So I can't drop it now.
All right, listen, it's, it's your race. Jessica Finicaro, Nicholas DiZaglio, and Steve Angelo. I'm going to give you guys an opportunity to introduce yourself. Please don't pull a Bill Bryant. Please don't spend 11 minutes on your introduction, talking about everything around the world from the beginning of fire and everything else. Just introduce yourself, tell people who you are, why they should vote for you. And then we'll get into the substance and the meat of the stuff. Whoever wants to go first, or I'll pick somebody, anybody.
I'll kick it off.
All right, DJ Borogad, Dave Borogad.
Sure. So I'm DJ Borogad, and I was born and raised here in Methuen. And I attended the CGS at Timony, Methuen High. So I guess I'm a townie. And, you know, I've always been passionate about this idea of giving back to the community, making Methuen better. And I've been, you know, trying to do that since I was a teenager. And now today, you know, I'm a dad, I'm a homeowner here in Methuen. My wife and I have a one-year-old daughter named Audrey. And there's a lot at stake in this election, and especially at this time in Methuen's history. And I felt like it was a fantastic time to step up and try to do the right thing by my fellow residents by running this year, getting involved. I earned my MBA. I worked in the financial services industry after earning that degree. And I was in a role Director of Communications for an investment firm down in Needham. But it was a small firm, so I had the opportunity to help a small investment advisory team manage about $700 million in client investment assets. I now work for a nonprofit in the city of Lawrence, and I have my own small business.
Can you say which nonprofit it is?
Sure. So I work with Notre Dame Cristo Ray High School in the development office there, helping them raise money, get the word out there.
I know them well. They're good people.
Fantastic organization. And now at this point, I hope to increase my involvement on the city council. So I appreciate the opportunity to be here.
Excellent. Jessica Finicaro.
Hi, my name's Jessica Finicaro. I'm a Methuen City Councilor-at-Large currently. My first term started in 2018. I have two graduate degrees, 15 years of experience. I serve on some boards and nonprofits. I work as a real estate agent and I work with contracts on a regular basis. When I, I feel like, you know, I've, I've been a lifelong Methuen resident, and I, I just kind of want us to get into the meat of the discussion here and talk about what exactly I can do for you as a resident who wants to help other residents. In 2017, when I decided to run, I said, you know, DeGasse Park on Mystic Street is dilapidated. It needs help. And I got to work right in the very beginning. And I was able to get that renovation project approved within the first few months of office, and I committed to that. You know, right out of the gate, the council faced a variety of serious, unanticipated financial issues. And I worked very hard advocating for the highest level of state oversight, going through two budget cycles, making a variety of proposals for budget cuts so that we can get our finances more in order. And I also authored several resolutions, including two for audits and financial investigations to get us back on track so that we can keep moving forward. My biggest thing that I am always focused on is transparency, accountability, and results. And I believe that we need to sort out the problems that we have in a positive way before we can start focusing on all of the other things that need to happen. I think that there are so many great candidates up and down the ballot, running right now. And I think that gives us an opportunity to work on those problems at the same time as working on so many of the other things that Methuen needs. When I first ran, some of the things I wanted to focus on was economic development and supporting the administration and lessening the burden for residential taxpayers. And I, there's a lot of other things that I'm hopeful that we'll talk about during this debate. But if anybody ever has any questions or wants to know how I feel on any particular issue, you can reach me on my cell phone. It's 978-566-1786. And looking forward to speaking with all of you tonight.
All right, Mr. DiZaglio, sir.
Thank you. First, I would like to thank you, Tom, and the Valley Patriot, along with.
Do you really mean it, though?
Of course.
Okay, all right. As long as you mean it, that's all I care.
I wouldn't be here if I didn't, though. So my name is Nick DiZaglio. I grew up in Methuen for the last 20 years. I went to the old Ashford School, then to the Timony, and then to Methuen High. Graduated from Suffolk University with two majors and a minor, both in political science and in communication, public relations. Went off into the real world as a HR talent consultant and executive. I recently just accepted the job of Head of Contingent Labor for a large retail company, which shall be overseeing a budget of $50 million, along with 4.5 million in procurement costs. My career path has allowed me to work very closely with the human resources world and human resource law and policy, along with procurement contracts and costs. A big thing that I'm pushing here as a city councilor candidate is urban renewal and infrastructure projects. I'm looking to work with a lot of our issues in the city right now that are currently facing us with closures of buildings and properties across the district, along with an aging infrastructure, both technology and utility.
Steve Angelo, you are new to all of this. This is your first time ever running for anything. I'm going to give you a little bit extra time if you'd like to. Tell people who you are, why you're running, why they should vote for you.
Thank you, Tom. I appreciate it. Hello, everyone. My name's Steve Angelo. I am one of the candidates for city councilor-at-large here in Methuen. And like Tom said, this is my first time ever running for political office. And I'll be the first to tell you, I never thought that I'd ever be running for political office within Methuen. But within the last few years, like many other residents, there's been a lot of frustrations with a lot of the things that have been going on within the city. And I want to be part of a team that helps to move Methuen forward and try to be part of something to get us over the hump that we are currently facing here in Methuen. I think I can do this because I bring a lot of tools and I bring a lot of assets to the city council. I am a graduate from Interco College with a Master's of Education. I also currently work for the Town of Stone as the Director of Recreation. Through that department, I handle all my budgeting. I handle all my marketing. I work with the State House in terms of grant proposals and working for additional aid. These are all things that will help to translate into the city council to really help move Methuen, get through some of the financial situations we're in right now. We're in a tough place, and we really need people who have the hearts of all the residents in Methuen as their top priority. And as a council member, I can promise that I will always put the residents first and work as a team with the other eight councillors to make sure that we're working for the betterment and moving Methuen forward.
So I appreciate you guys giving your, your opening statements. We're going to do the same thing at the end. As you know, there are no rules on this debate. This isn't, this isn't MCTV where we say you have to be nice to everybody or we're going to slap your hand. They mean well, and what they do is great, but it's, it's not actually a debate. It's a forum, and they do good at that. This is a different format. I'm going to let you guys interact with, with each other. So if somebody's making a point and someone else thinks, hey, wait a minute, that, that point is wrong, you can feel free to interrupt the other person as long as you're being respectful and discuss with each other. I think it's important at home for people to see how you interact with each other because you're going to be sitting on a board, and they need to see how you're going to interact with your fellow board members. I think this is a good exercise. The first question I want to ask is the same question I asked last, at the last debate last week. It's one of the things that's not really being talked about in this campaign, but it's certainly being talked about all over Methuen. And that is the proposal, I know that Steve Saber and his family are trying to monkey things behind the scenes to get some kind of a marijuana-growing facility. Forgetting who's involved for a minute, the people of Methuen voted against marijuana when it was on the state ballot. And the, there is, there's a lot of anger and an undercurrent of, of people who don't want this in Methuen. What would you, just a growing facility? This is not a store where people can buy marijuana. It's just a growing facility, like they proposed in North Andover. What do you guys think about that? What do you think of, of a growing marijuana facility in the city? The pros and the cons, whether you would support it or not support it, and whoever wants to go first?
I'll take a whack at it first. So I work for a biotech currently, and.
Can you just explain to people what biotech is?
Pharmaceutical organization, drug labs, testing of chemicals to, for cures. We, we currently do MS as our primary drug currently. But long story short, MS is a perfect example. I know a lot of MS folks that use marijuana as a medical purpose. Now, I'm a perfect advocate of medical marijuana. I follow the federal rules, though, especially as an HR person. I know Massachusetts, we've, we've denied folks in, you know, applying for positions currently because they failed their drug test because of marijuana. Though it's legal in Massachusetts, it's not legal on the federal level. So for me, I would propose that we would have a blind bid to the city council if there was ever a proposal to come up or multiple proposals, to have a blind bid come in front of the council. And whichever bid we decided on, I think that should go back to the ballot and allow the proposal to be shown on the ballot and let the voters of Methuen decide. Because a growing facility is very different than a dispensary. Growing facilities will allow that, the, the actual owners to have their own security, their own gates, their own lockdown. And a lot of these pharmaceutical companies in the area that are growing marijuana for testing of their drugs, they're currently increasing their own security around their, their industries as well.
Anybody else? Who else wants in on this?
I'll take it. So I agree with Nick. I think, you know, in terms of medical marijuana, American Cancer Society shows that there can be some benefits for people who suffer from cancer and numerous other diseases. So I'm not against the sale of medicinal marijuana, exclusively medicinal. Recreational, though, I have some big problems with simply because I think we're in the midst of a raging opioid crisis. And I think that there are still unsettled discussions about whether it's a gateway drug. So I would err on the side of caution, not to mention, the people in Methuen in 2016 voted against legalization of marijuana, period. Now, in terms of the growth facility, I think that as long as, you know, it's indoors, it's something that is completely secure, I'm not against it because it doesn't involve the actual retail sale of marijuana. And I think that it could be potentially good for us in terms of tax revenue and such. But at the same time, I do agree that, you know, perhaps it is worthwhile to, you know, gauge the temperature of the voters and get their take on it before we would actually proceed with it. But in terms of, you know, the bidding and such, I think that the more people who bid on something like that, the better it is for the city because that gives the city leverage in terms of negotiating various elements of the agreement. So I would hope that, you know, before we were to go too far with it, we would have numerous competitors trying to apply for that type of thing.
No, and I would agree with DJ with that in terms of, we need to basically go out and try to attract more business here in general in Methuen. And I think that we are naive to not look into a growing facility here in Methuen because we're in financial stress right now, and we need to find opportunities to generate more revenue on a commercial base for the city. And I think in 10 years, we might be saying, did we miss the boat on this? And we're already a little behind other communities around here who have already decided to adopt this. And for us, I believe that we need to really start to make an innovative look to say, hey, how can we generate more money? And with everything, I think that this is an easy opportunity to look into. I think that it has to be a lot of research done. I also think that security is a huge aspect of it. I'm against all retail in any type of facility, but as a growing facility, which will outsource to other communities, but generate income from Methuen, I think that it's a no-brainer.
Jess Finicaro, you've been awfully quiet on this.
Hi, this is Jessica Finicaro.
Can you just pull this, pull your mic and just send it in? There you go. Great.
So for me, both, looking at the symptoms and issues with regards to why people are interested in medicinal and recreational marijuana, to me is, is vital in this discussion. I come from, and I, I always like to disclose this because I think people can sometimes understand my hesitation a little bit better. I come from a family where I've had multiple people in my immediate family die from overdoses. So because of that, I, and of course countless friends, like everybody in the Merrimack Valley really has experienced that. My concern is always utmost with the residents. There is never a situation where I would say something is not good for the city, but because it will make us a few bucks, I'm willing to do it. However, that doesn't mean that you ever take anything off the table. My position is on this that we had a vote statewide. It's now legal. And we did have a special provision in that law that says that if, since Methuen actually voted against it, we actually don't have to have marijuana of any kind, whether it be recreational, medicinal, or growing facility, if we don't want to. Now, I, I actually believe that the residents, a lot of residents do want us to have that. And so I'm very cognizant of that. And I, I look at, what is the bigger picture here? I look at things like the fact that we have a commission on the city council and through the mayor's office and his administration that was started as a cannabis commission. And I was very disappointed because I wanted to follow and, and learn along with what they were doing. And they actually refused to let people know about the meetings. The meetings were not publicly posted. I asked for meeting minutes several times before they finally told me, even on the floor, we're not going to give you the meeting minutes. And so we've gotten updates, this to major updates every once in a while during a city council meeting. But I'm really disappointed with so far this process because I think this is a larger discussion, not just a couple of events that, that we had to reach out to the community, a larger discussion with the community to find out how that is. So my opinion on this is that I believe that we actually should have, instead of a non-binding question, I think that we should actually have a, a question where we say, this is going to be the answer we need to have on the ballot, whether we ask the question specifically, whether it's for a growth facility, growing facility, or if we want to have anything else, and say to the Methuen residents, do you want this for your community? Let them all vote. And whatever that vote is, I would absolutely honor that wish. You know, so for me, but I, I don't take anything off the table. I've talked and listened to people who are interested in growing facilities in the city. I serve on the Community Development Board, and that's something that we can't look away from because there, there is a lot of money in there, and, and I'm, I'm open to it. But there's a lot more discussion that needs to be had. It's a very serious issue to me.
And Jess, just to go on top of that as well, I said, is, I think the transparency, like you talked about, is key for any type of aspect of thinking of a growth facility, whether it be at the council level or whether it be at the community level. And we need to make sure that, that we have open communication with the public before we even bring it to a vote. I think a vote's absolutely necessary to check the polls on what the city wants. It's their thoughts and their desires of what we really should be following. And I really think that making sure that we're doing things on the up and up and making sure that we're as open and as transparent about things as possible is key. And I would 100% agree on that.
And I agree with both of you, too, but, but I disagree on one part. I think we need to give the facts, like if we had bids or the multiple bid program, and we decide, oh, well, this one has more sales tax, or this one has more income coming to the city, or more finances, I, I, and more security. They'll have cameras, they'll have guards, they'll have walking facilities, they'll have gates, whatever. I think the city would feel more at common at bay if we had a bid or some sort of proposal instead of just saying, do you want a grow facility? Or do you want a dispensary? Or, or can we smoke on the common? We, I think we need a bigger proposal.
I think that goes back to communication.
Oh, absolutely.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear.
You're giving them all the details of what they're buying into. You're not just saying, hey, it's A or B. No, you need to give people more information. I said, and that's part of the transparency that we think we start to need. And I think that's what people have lost a lot of faith in.
Yeah.
Some of the government that we have right now is because people don't think they're getting the information.
And I think when you have too many committees, it kind of gets lost, too. I think it should be brought back to the council, have the conversation again, decide on a direction. And then if you want to put the committee back to look at the bids and then bring the bids to us, or have the mayor's office, again, there's conversations to have at the table. But I don't think we need 100 different committees talking about, you know, cannabis, chicken coops. I think bring it back to the, bring it back to the council and have the open discussion.
So I guess I just want to clarify on, on this topic, I think that we should actually have a front gate, and that front gate should be the vote. I don't, this is, this is why people, I think, don't like politicians. You're putting the cart before the horse. You don't want to actually say, we're worrying about the money, we're worrying about who's going to get what and who's getting this multimillion-dollar opportunity? That, that comes way after we decide if we even want it and what we actually want. That's the number one discussion. What do we want to have, if anything? And get that sorted out. Then we go through and plan a real process. What is this real and fair process? Have a lot of debate about that, and then go forward with that. But to me, any of, any of the time where I hear people talking money about who's going to get it, what's going to happen, whose application's going to be accepted, what, what location it could be at, that disturbs me. I, I think that's not.
But I think that's, but I think that stuff determines the definition of, okay, if it's not in my neighborhood, or if it's in a good facility area, or it's in a business park, if it's not down the street from, you know, a, a school or a public park, it allows, I think if you have a plan, I mean, again, companies do it, cities do it, they come up with a plan and they initiate the conversation. We have three, four, five bids, have an open session where people come and talk about the bids, and that leads the council at bay to say, okay, well, they've said no, 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 and no, well, then that's the conversation. But we think that this, this bid right here should go on a ballot and discuss. Or you have multiple bids that go on the ballot and you decide, or no, I don't like either one.
Well, why don't we do this? Why don't we kind of simplify everything? Because I, we're kind of going in a bunch of different directions here. I think that ultimately.
Which is good for ratings, by the way.
Okay. But I just think in terms of actually trying to legislate and govern, it's important, as Jess mentioned, to start with A, right here, which is, what is the will of the voter? Okay? And then from, you can progress on to all the different things.
Well, if that's the case, so the voter's already voted no. So then that's the end of the conversation.
Well, they voted no on legalization. I don't think we've, we haven't done a referendum about specifically, you know, whether you want a grow facility or not. So I think if we start with step one, which is ascertain the will of the voter. From there, I think we can put together the plans. And if anybody is focusing on, okay, who's going to get what, stop right there because that is not where we want that conversation.
And you've already had that happen before we've even gotten into the real meat of a real discussion about a real thing happening.
Right.
You've got, you've got an elected official whose family member has already gone before the council and tried to push some things forward. And so that's one of the reasons I want to have, I wanted to have this as a, for transparency's sake, to have this discussion with the candidates because somebody's going to win this election. Every single debate we have, somebody at this table is going to be sitting at the council table. You guys will be making that decision.
Right. That's why you got to start with that. And you can't be focusing on the profit motive. When I mentioned the tax value, I'm just simply, you know, talking about the potential economic value to the city. But again, this issue has a very real human value, too, and we need to focus on addressing that.
So before I move on, so I, I, I think that all of you are in agreement that you don't want a dispensary in Methuen. Why is that? If you guys don't mind just me asking that. I agree with you, by the way, but I'm not running. But I'm just, I'm wondering why. I think people at home would like to know why it is that you would all be against a dispensary. Maybe some of them are for it. Maybe they have an argument for it. Anybody?
I just, I go back to that idea that we are in the midst of a raging opioid crisis. And do we want government to be in the business of simply enabling the additional consumption of what research suggests is a gateway drug to so many other things? I think that we just need to pause. And actually, in one of the papers, it asked our opinion about whether we want pot shops in Methuen recreationally. And I said, we just don't have enough data. If you look at Colorado and Washington, all these different states that have legalized it, they don't have the regulatory framework in place entirely, the law enforcement framework in place entirely. So why would we be so gung ho on trying to adopt something? We don't even truly know the implications of what we're doing. I think we need a lot more data before we were to make a decision like that.
And I would agree, DJ. And I said, and I think that goes back to the, I'm going to say, the, where it has on our resources within the city. And does the actual having the retail impact to what we do from a police standpoint, from a fire standpoint, from a city resource standpoint? And is it worth it? As of right now, Methuen can't afford it. I don't think that we couldn't be able to foot the bill for putting extra police officers on duty. And I know the security would still be done within a dispensary, but I still think that it would have a little more impact as opposed to shipping it out to a different community. It'd be going right out to our sidewalks, and we would need to monitor that much more. And I, once again, I think it goes to research and doing intensive research before we start to make any decisions like that.
I guess I'm asking, oh, go ahead.
I just want to add something, too. You know, though, I don't see the federal government legalizing this anytime soon, though, across the United States. But there are states like Massachusetts that are getting progressively open with HR and employment laws with this. Massachusetts that are getting progressively open with HR and employment laws with this. Las Vegas, oh, not just Las Vegas, Nevada and California actually just placed laws protecting folks that, that smoke marijuana. And unless they're doing some sort of driving position or some sort of interaction in a warehouse, if they're a finance accountant, a lawyer, they cannot be fired, nor can they be denied a job of employment. And I really hope Massachusetts doesn't go that way. Because I don't want it in my building. But at the same time, I don't want it in my town.
So I guess one of the reasons I'm asking is because, uh, and by the way, I voted against making it legal. Um, but I'm, I'm trying to liken this to alcohol because it's a very, very similar thing with what happened back in the twenties whereby, okay, the, the, the law has been changed and they're allowing it to be legal. And, and would, would it be right for a town like North Andover or Methuen to say, well, we don't want any liquor shops downtown? Because we don't agree with it being legal. And then trying to restrict the sale of something that is legal, whether we like it or not. Again, I voted no. But, but whether it's legal or not, um, I mean, whether, whether we want it or not, it is legal. And, and how fair is it to a community to say no to somebody that wants to open up a liquor store or a pot shop? No, you can't do that. You don't have the freedom to do that even though it's legal.
So I'll, I'll take that. Um, I think my biggest thing is the fact that because we are in the situation that Methuen voted no, is we're one of the very few communities in the entire Commonwealth that gets to decide if we do want anything. And if so, what? And we can make it so that we only get certain things. Other communities don't have that opportunity. They can try and use zoning to make it next to impossible to have something. Um, but oftentimes they're getting sued and, and, you know, concerned about how to actually navigate that procedurally. Uh, so we have an opportunity here to have a real discussion. And I haven't felt like that discussion has happened. There's been a handful of, uh, open house type events where people on both sides were very spirited and interested. I went to every single one of those and it was a great opportunity to hear a lot of people. And there's a lot of my supporters on either side that tell me strongly, I, I, I want everything from a recreational location to I want absolutely nothing. And, um, I think it's, it's something that's so important that politicians shouldn't be making it with only their specific worldview. It should be the worldviews of the collective. Uh, and I, I think that there are quite a few instances where that should be it. I think this is a perfect example of, uh, using the ballot to, uh, to make that decision.
This is good. I think this is a very productive discussion. I'm glad we, we got to do this. Uh, my next question is, you know, much has been made when I talk to members of the community, especially, uh, during the election. And I say, well, what do you think about candidate X? What do you think about candidate Y? And almost the first question that I get is, who are they aligned with? Who's supporting them? Who are they endorsing? Uh, because, and I've used you Jess as an example in the last election, um, that, that there are times when you could propose curing cancer at the council table and there's six people voting no against you. Because you're the one that, that made the motion. And so I think there are a lot of people out there who don't want that anymore. They don't want people who are aligned with certain factions on both sides. And so my question to all of you is with that big buildup, I guess, is who is supporting you? Who are you supporting? And please, don't, again, don't be a Bill Bryant. Don't try to redefine what support means in order to not be able to answer the question. You know what I'm asking you. Who are you supporting? Who is supporting you? Anybody who wants to go first or I'll call somebody.
So are you asking who are we supporting for which office or just generically?
Well, you know, candidates, candidates, elected officials. Who's supporting you? Who's, who are you supporting?
Okay. Uh, well, my support, I think, comes from a wide array of people. I have supporters of Mr. Perry. I have supporters of councillor Canaan. I have teachers that I used to have that, and when I was in school. I have neighbors. Literally, the, the list is infinite in terms of, well, not infinite. I'm not trying to make myself sound that cool because I'm not. But I'm just saying that, you know, it comes from a diverse array of people. Um, in terms of, you know, who I support, I look for-
Well, I'm not looking for like, you know, Joe Blow down the street supports me. I'm looking for candidates, elected officials. Who's supporting you? Does the mayor support you? Does the president of the city council support you? Does the president of the school committee support you? Um, who, who in this election, candidates and elected officials are, are, are pulling for DJ and who is it that maybe you're endorsing?
So, uh, I think I have the support of, uh, you know, Mr. Perry. I, I have the support of, um, former mayor Manzi. Former mayor DeZoglio has been very supportive. Um, in terms of who I'm supporting, I'm looking for candidates who are articulating ideas and articulating a vision for the city's future. Uh, I believe that I can ultimately work with anybody who is elected. And I think that the feeling hopefully is mutual in terms of, you know, respect there. I have respect for everybody. Uh, but in terms of like the mayor's race, for instance, you know, I, I think that the council is the board of directors and the mayor in essence is the CEO. You need to have good working relationships there. Uh, but from my vote on November 5th, um, I have chosen a candidate who I believe articulates a vision, articulates a strategy and is trying to discuss ways to move the city in a positive direction. And I think, and I'm going to preface this by saying, over the past two weeks or so, um, the, the tenor of that campaign, the mayoral campaign, has completely devolved into total insanity. And I think we're focusing almost exclusively on talking about why the other candidate is awful. We need to move away from that. For me personally, my vote on November 5th, I've decided to vote for Mr. Perry because I believe he has articulated a vision. That's what I want to hear as a voter and I hope everybody, uh, can respect that. Ultimately, I can work with whoever is elected and, uh, we need to work together. But just as a voter, that's where I've decided to go personally.
Well, I appreciate your transparency. But let me just do the follow up. Are there any candidates for city council that you are supporting? Is there anybody who, when you're knocking on doors, you're saying, hey, if you don't have a vote in this race, would you like to throw a vote to so and so?
I have, uh, fine things to say about pretty much everything, everybody running. I think, uh, up here Jessica's done a fantastic job. As a councillor, Steve has articulated a, you know, his own ideas, talking about being positive and moving the city in a, in a good direction. And Nick has served the community for a long time. I've known him for a while. So, you know, I'm not going around trashing people at all. I think we need to focus on being positive and lifting the city up.
So that's not an answer?
Well, that's honest truth. That's what I, that's what I said.
So you're not endorsing, you're not supporting any other candidates on the city council?
Um, well, I'm supporting DJ Boragard for at large, of course. And I think the voters will look at all of the other candidates and they'll make their decisions accordingly.
All right. We're going to give you the captain obvious award. Jessica?
Hi. Um, so I think for me, I, first of all, I think every politician hates this question.
They do. And that's why I ask.
Um, and, and I, 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 I actually really, I think I hate to answer this question because I feel like in a way, it kind of disappoints, uh, some of my supporters who appreciate that, um, I am neutral and, and work really hard to work with everybody. But I actually personally hate when politicians don't answer any questions on the debate floor.
Me too.
Because oftentimes my, uh, understanding of them as a person has to do, like you said, with, um, with who they are supporting. So I will fully answer it.
Thank you.
Um, uh, for me, as far as, well, I'll get, I'll get the, the big one, uh, out of the gate, um, for the mayoral's race. Um, for me, I, uh, have had the opportunity to, uh, work with councillor Canaan. Uh, and I've had the opportunity to, uh, meet and sit down and speak with, uh, Mr. Perry and learn about, uh, what his, uh, intentions are. And, um, I have listened to both of their campaigns and, uh, thought a lot about it. And I think, to me, it's very clear about leadership style. Um, for me, the clear choice of me personally, who I'm voting for, is, uh, Mr. Perry for mayor. Uh, I am not, you know, I haven't endorsed or, you know, or anything like that or, you know, helping or that, that kind of thing. Um, but that's my personal vote where I actually find really personal. I hate to even say, talk about my personal vote. Sometimes people don't even know how I'm voting until I-
It's helping the ratings. Keep going.
Um, but, uh, but that, that is who I will be voting for. Um, as far as people who I know, uh, support me, I guess I'll try and think about it in terms of, like, say for example, who has their sign on my lawn. Um, got, uh, Mike Samard in the west. I think he's great. Um, Ally Saffy, uh, in the west, I think she's great too. Uh, both of them have signs, uh, on their front yard. As well as councillor Ziegler in the east. I think she's been a fierce advocate for-
She's going to be mayor someday. She's going to be mayor someday.
I think she's excellent. Um, we work together very well and, um, she's a very positive person. And, uh, she has my sign on her lawn. Um, you know, I, I, I think, um, everybody sitting here at the table, uh, has attended events for me. Um, I've received donations from two, I believe, of the candidates that are up here. Um, and, which is, I think awesome that, you know, we're able to work together and, and this sort of thing, um, in a race. I'm trying to think of-
Who are the two?
Um, so I believe it's Steve Angelo and from DJ Boragard.
I, I think I donated to at your last event.
Oh.
That I came to the spaghetti dinner.
Okay.
If I didn't, I, I thought I donated to all three.
Checks in the mail?
No, I've donated, every campaign that I, I don't want to interrupt, but every campaign event that I've gone to, I've given a check. And I'll talk more about that in a second.
Yeah. Yeah. Um, so as far as, I know that you had mentioned, um, Manzi Pollard. So I, I had wanted to, um, to, uh, say that as well. I, I've received support from both of those individuals. Um, I, I actually call a wide variety of people when I'm, I'm looking at a tough vote or something that I think I want to understand better. And it usually takes you calling three or four or five plus different people to finally get in, uh, the right side of things. Everybody has their own point of view. That's natural. Um, and , uh, so I've, I've found both of them, uh, to be helpful on occasion, calling them, what is their thoughts on things? You know, oftentimes I don't, uh, agree.
I know.
And, uh, you know, it, it's good. I listen to people's thoughts and then make a decision from there. Um, trying to think of anybody else that, um, I don't think there's anybody else that you brought up to address, but I'm happy to answer any other questions on that.
All right, Nick?
Sure. Uh, I'll start with the mayor's. Um, I'm not endorsing anyone, but I do know Jen Canaan and I've been able to meet with Neil Perry a few times. I'm very disappointed in how this election has been going, uh, more recently in the last three weeks. And I've had that conversation with both candidates. Uh, Mr. Perry brings business ethic and business intelligence and, and, uh, work ethic. And, and I'm all about the business side of, of running a business. And at the same time, you do have the municipal experience of Jen Canaan. So it is a tough decision. Um, but I do want to point out that I'm not happy with the way that the election has turned out for that race. Both people, um, I can work with. I've donated to both campaigns. I also donated actually probably more money to Dan Chabilla because he had a paint night, um, than I went to. Um, so-
If you don't mind me interrupting, because you say you're not happy with, it's very vague. People at home don't know, don't know what that means. You're not happy with the way it's turned out. Can you be specific?
Uh, you know, between the mailers, between, you know, the, the personal attacks, I think families should be out of an election altogether. I think, and that goes both ends, you know, between the conflicts of interest or to, to anyone's history. Uh, I think that personal attacks, I'm not about personal attacks. Um, but again, both candidates have strong strengths. I think you're going to have to make the decision, listen to both of them, listen to how they talk, listen how they critique the, the institution. Again, Jen Canaan has a lot to offer. Mr. Perry has stuff to offer too. But I need, I need to know that when I win as a councillor, that I'll be able to work with both candidates in any relationship.
Who's supporting you? Are any of the candidates for mayor or the city council supporting you?
No one has endorsed me. Um, no one has endorsed me. The only endorsement that-
Supporting you?
I have support, I hope I have the support of many of these folks that are running. I mean, like I said, Steve Angelo's dad's my eye doctor. Jess was at my wedding. She sold me my house. DJ Boragard, I've known for 15, 20 years. He was at my wedding too. I mean, two of the, yeah, two of these people were at my wedding. And I was there 12 hours after DJ's baby was born. I mean, there are three relationships here that I hope whoever loses or does not win, doesn't walk away from the political, and I say that to any candidate. Any candidate that stands in this spotlight, in this environment currently, I hope you come back as a committee member, as a board member, or, or involved in something in this city. Because you put yourself out there, you've defined your position, you've stood by that position. And for me, I, I hope I have the support of many candidates. I know there's some candidates that don't support me. Um-
Well, we know that some candidates that do support you. I'm just waiting for you to say who they are.
I mean, uh, Bill Bryant's come out for me at my event. Steve Saber's come out to my event. Steve Angelo has come to my event. Um, Joyce Campagnon, DJ D came to my event. Um, Jen Canaan came to my event. Um, Sue Nicholson came to my, Bob Ogler. I can keep going. But it, it, for me, it's not about the name. It's about the position that you're going to take with these councillors. You can't say, I support that one, that one, when you know you got to have to collaborate and work with them in a committee or a council. Because nothing will get done if you're attacking each other out here. Because you're the leaders of the city. You're going to be leading the city going forward. You need to go in there together, talk the facts, talk the, the statistics, talk about what you're going to do. We've been harboring too much on the four years of the city that we've neglected next year. You know, we have, the city is falling apart. We have PMA now closing, which I would like-
You're going to kind of off topic.
I know. But where I'm going is, is the city is closing down in certain areas. And it's not greener up here because there are stores walking away from up here and going out of business and retail's going in a different direction. But I'm talking about when you're working with people, when you want to get the job done, you need to have the support of your council and your team members. And that's what I'm about. I'm about collaborating and working as a team. I might not agree with you, Tom, but I'm not going to stab you in the back tomorrow.
Hope not. Steve Angelo.
So Tom, as you know-
More, more on point if you can.
I will do my best. So as you know, I'm completely new to politics. So me going to fundraisers and going and making connections with other politicians is very new to me. And I can honestly say, I've been to every single fundraiser for everyone here at this table. I said, I've been to fundraisers all throughout the city. And I have not come out to publicly endorse a single person.
Okay.
I said, and I have told everyone that from the mayor's race to any council race, I will not be coming out to publicly endorse anyone. Because I honestly think that the idea of block voting and alliances is very unhealthy for the government. I do. And once we decide to have allegiances before we even get into government, I said-
I like that answer.
We have an issue. I said, where all of a sudden, we have certain agendas. And that's how these conflict, not conflict of interest, but these personal agendas-
Personal conflicts.
Personal conflicts become an issue for the city is when all of a sudden you have a block vote where you know, I'm getting those six votes regardless of what goes to that table.
Right, right.
We can't have that. And I've worked very hard to work very independently in my campaign. My mother, my sister, my cousin, that's my campaign team. I've been very home roots and I've made it a point to stay very independent and very open minded when I've spoken to every single candidate here. And I've met with Mr. Perry who's in the audience right now. I've met with Jen. I have respect for both of them. And I said, I've told them both personally, I said, I'm not going to come out to publicly endorse because I don't think that once you start to pick a sign, it's unhealthy for the city. You need to have someone with an independent voice who's going to step forward and look forward, look to be the person for the 50,000 people, not the six or seven that you align with on the council.
Is there anybody out there, can I say something?
Hold on, dude. Is there anybody out there supporting you? Are there any other candidates that are helping you, supporting you? They're holding signs for you. There's a sign on their lawn. They want you to win. No, Tom, the only person that has a sign, my, of my sign on their lawn, I can tell you right now is Frank El. I said, and I said-
He's the best.
And-
I should have said him too.
Yeah. I said, Frank El's the only one that has my sign on his lawn. And in terms of who's endorsing me and who's a, I hope I've gained the respect of a lot of people throughout this race, the way that I've run my campaign.
You've certainly gained mine.
I said, is, I'm going to stay positive. I'm going to stay on track and I'm going to stay to the facts. And I'm not going to let my personal beliefs get in the way of doing what's right and what's wrong. And that's what we need right now at the council. We don't need people who, oh, I like this person, so I'm voting. No, we need people to make the right decisions for Methuen. And that's where I've been steadfast in my campaign since day one.
Uh, DJ, you wanted to jump in on this?
Yeah. So I wanted to piggyback off of something Steve said, which I totally agree with almost everything he just said. Um, I think that it is so unproductive here in Methuen to have these, uh, teams. We have this team here, this team here. And ultimately, you lose the common ground when the focus becomes on what this, uh, block is saying and what that block is saying. And it's almost like we have these cliques. Why can't everybody just be focused on good government? The idea that we all live in this city, we all love this city. We might have disagreements about exactly, you know, what to do for this ordinance or how, how to push this forward. But ultimately, we need to find the areas of common ground because if we don't do that, we're just going to continue to be going our separate ways and it's completely unproductive.
And I, and I want to add to that because by coming out and saying they support me and that support, that's putting you in alignment with the vote. And I'm never going to be a bought vote. My vote is my own individual vote. I'll collaborate with the team. I'll take the knowledge and I will move forward with that decision. But, uh, you know, by saying, you know, John supports me, Jane supports me. Well, if I agree with them, I don't want to be like I'm aligning with them with my vote. And that's not the case.
Well, but in a lot of cases, it is the case. We have Team Saber, right? Let's just, let's just put it out there, right? Because we don't know what we're talking about. We have Team Saber. If you're with Team Saber, you've got to, you've got to have a certain, you've got to check the boxes. You're going to hate the police department. You're going to be going after Joe Solomon. They have their agenda, right? And so when I'm asking people, what do you think about Nick DeZoglio? Or what do you think about Joel Ferretta? The, almost the first question they ask me is, who are they aligned with? Are they with Steve Saber? Are they against Steve Saber? Are they with Team Perry? Are they with Team Canaan? And people want to know who it is that you're aligned with because most likely that's who you're going to be voting with. That's who's going to be influencing you when you get on the council.
Well, here's, I want to specify something. So like for me, I love Mike Samard. I, I love, I, I, people like Joel Ferretta, I think he's awesome. Um, and then I'm, I'm friends with councillor McCarty and, uh, Ally Saffy. All people from all over the spectrum. And ultimately, I think what we need in our politics are people who can, at the end of a council meeting, be able to get along still as humans and still be able to just have basic conversations. Because when we get so locked on the politics and the negativity and the disagreements, it completely leads to gridlock. And I think that that has been a huge problem that this city has faced over the past few years. We don't get along, so we get not a whole lot done. We could be way more productive if we focused on trying to cultivate the areas of agreement.
I wanted to say too, um, that this, in 2017, I actually supported, uh, everybody who ended up being on the council. Uh, you know, I, I, so I told my whole family to vote for them and, um, and tried to be helpful with the people who needed it. And, um, you know, then I, I think there was, uh, along the way with some very tough decisions, there's uh, some breakdowns in communications. And there was a lot of negativity. And I think that's why people are asking now because they have now found themselves, whether anybody wanted this to happen or planned it to happen or not, they found themselves leaning more towards one group of people, how people tended to vote. And people vote differently all the time. And, you know, it's not like people were voting with the same voting patterns at every vote. But, um, but-
It was pretty, it was pretty close though. I mean-
But the tone, I think the tone is important. Who was attacking? Who, what was happening? Um, for me, as somebody who has been on the receiving end of some of that, uh, that's something that, you know, I, there's some people who will get more information before a vote than others. There's, there's practical things that actually happen when people don't get along. And I can say for myself, moving forward, um, that's something that I will , uh, never ever do. And, uh, I, I'm so disappointed in how some of the council has, uh, turned out in terms of some negativity that we've seen. Because I don't think that that's what residents want us to do. There's a lot of residents who, uh, say, you know what? These people always seem to disagree with each other and like both of them. Um, and, uh, they want us to bring different opinions to the table. That's why they voted for us.
Right. But I think that's how you handle yourself at the table as well, Jess. I said, and being able to work through conflicts is a big part of being a council member. And when I go out and talk to people, I'm going to say, they are somewhat embarrassed by the demeanor of people within that city council. You have executive session for a reason, you're out in public for a reason. I said, there's a lot of things that can be done in executive session.
Oh, I agree.
And then once you become, go on that council floor, you're representing 50,000 people. And you need to work as professional, in the best interest of them in mind. And whether you get along with someone or not, it's not you that you're up there representing. It's 50,000 people. And you need to put your own personal agendas and stuff aside to[1746.58]
And you need to put your own personal agendas and stuff aside to be able to say, hey, what's in the best interest of Methuen? And that's where you stand.
I agree 100%.
So you guys have been getting away now for the last three debates. You've, you all, all four of you have gotten away with this. I'm gonna not let you get away with it anymore now. You had two debates on MCTV, one debate here, and everybody loves everybody. It was one big kumbaya session, all three debates. So what I wanna do now is I wanna mix that up a little bit. I think people need to see the distinctions between, between the four of you. I'd like you guys, each one of you, to ask another candidate a question and have a discussion with them about what it is that, whatever that question is, your top priority, their top priority, something they've been involved in, whatever it is that you want. But I'd like to give you guys an opportunity to ask each other a question and engage with them in that answer. Or I'll pick. Nick Disoglio, why don't you go first, since I've been mean to you?
Uh, so I'll start with the three of us, all three. I'm gonna ask all three.
Well, it's gonna take a lot of time.
I, I, but I think it's important.
Okay, go ahead. It's your question.
With the current state of the economic infrastructure of, of Methuen, with recent closures of PMA now happening, and now Stop and Shop, and the Loop is losing business across the board. Where do you see is a huge area of improvement for the Economic Development Board, or Community Development Board? And where do you see Methuen going forward, how to attract the business to come to Methuen? So two questions. Better the Economic Development Board, and how do we get those businesses here? I'll start with, I'll start with ladies first.
Sure. So, so I just wanna clarify, are you talking about the Community Development Board that's appointed by the mayor? Or are you talking about the Community and Economic Development Board?
Uh, Bill Buckley's office.
Okay, so he, so he actually serves on both. The one that I'm on is the Community and Economic Development Subcommittee of the council. And to answer your question on how we can be helpful, while we can't have executive power to, you know, be the person who goes in and says, hey, what if we work on a TIF, which is some tax incentives? How do we do this? How do we do that? But I do personally reach out to business owners all the time. What are we doing wrong? How can we improve ourselves? What would make your life easier for, to operate as a business? What would keep you here? And it's, all the time, it's not just tax incentives, it's a whole list of items that we could do better. You know, we had a Board of Trade that is no longer present. And I think that we really need to bring back a Board of Trade, one. Two, we need to do a lot more with our Economic Community Development Board. I serve on that with Counselor Ziegler, Bill Buckley, and some other people. And what we have done is, the first big thing that we had was Methuen Day. And, you know, we have a bunch of ideas of other things that we wanna do. One that I really want us to do is to bring our downtown more together in a formalized group. And that, to me, is something that's really important. And so that there's, there's not a, there's, there's no minimum on ideas on how to do this, but you need to have a mayor who's willing to support it. And so, you know, there's been some frustrations that I've had with constant interest in development of residential properties instead of commercial. Because we have vacant buildings, we have people, we, we need to focus on that. So that's, that's where I think I can be helpful, is trying to grease those wheels. What exactly is your problems? Can we even help you? And if we can, I bet you other people have that problem. How do we be business friendly? And, you know, go out and, and make it happen. And we can be helpful, all nine councillors can be helpful advocates to the mayor, and push the mayor in that direction. Push them away from developing all of our open space. Push them towards developing commercially. And that's what's gonna drive the taxes down for the residents.
And I think that goes exactly right, Jessica, in terms of, it's the vision of the mayor that really is the importance. And it's, as council members, to kinda steer the ship to say, this is what we need for the city. And that has a trickle-down effect to every single department head, every single board, and every single person who's involved with creating this economic resurgence, which we really need. And we need to have full buy-in. And as of right now, I don't think that we do. I think a lot of people are split, and I think a lot of personal agendas and personal beliefs have gone in the way of actually putting the best interests of Methuen first. And I really think that with the new mayor in place, I said, it's going to really change the dynamic of City Hall. I think it's gonna change the dynamic of a lot of boards, and I really think it's gonna change the dynamic of the city. And I'm really excited for it. In terms of how do we attract businesses, we need to improve our infrastructure, underground and above ground right now. I said, we haven't been addressing that stuff for several years. And if I'm a company, and I know that I'm building, or I'm moving into a building that hasn't had soul worked on in 40 years, and it could impact my day-to-day operations in three, why do I wanna buy in? We need to start to look into long-term planning to actually say, these are the issues that we need to address to make ourselves more attractive for business within the city.
DJ?
Sure, so I think the question was related to specifically where we could probably improve in terms of economic development, where we think we should go. I think that we need to be way more proactive than we have been, especially recently. We're losing Stop and Shop next year, we're losing Avenue at the Loop. And we, we're always in the habit, I feel like, of putting out fires. And this is something that I don't think we really haven't talked about at all in any race. And that is, we're starting to see indicators. Now granted, nothing's guaranteed, but within the next 12 to 18 months, the next city council and the next mayor could very well be governing through a recession.
Yes.
So that is something that we need to start talking about too. So how do we align our economic development strategy with this realization that we could be in for a heck of a time in terms of the economy? I, I think that Jess is right, spot on with this idea of bringing back like a Board of Trade. I know Amesbury, which is way smaller than Methuen, they have their own Chamber of Commerce. Why can't we look at doing stuff like that? And in terms of Methuen, we have so many huge assets in terms of just our location, where we're located, along every major highway around here, except for 128. And we're right near Boston. Perfect opportunity for businesses to set up shop. And I just wanna see our Economic Development Department be a little bit more proactive, get ahead of a lot of the issues that we're facing in terms of development in Salem, Lawrence, et cetera. And I think we need a plan, we need a strategy in order to move forward. And I don't think we're there yet.
I hope that all of you guys ordered your campaign t-shirts through Royal Screen Printing. They're sponsoring the program tonight. This is actually, I think, the second or third debate that they've sponsored. And Guy Andrew over there is a great guy, I do all of my business with him. And you guys know how tough it is to do business with me. I'm very, very strict with the types of people I do business with. And it's a pleasure to do business with him. Climate Designs, if you, if you're approaching, we're approaching, wow, I've, I've lost my train of thought. We're approaching winter now, and you should be looking at your boiler, you should be making sure that your heating system is okay. Give Climate Designs System a call. Martin O's Towing, if something happens and your car is not working right, you need to have it towed somewhere, give Martin O's Towing a call. We certainly appreciate their support. And of course, Jana Zanny Pashi, in full disclosure, I'm gonna tell you who I'm endorsing this year. I'm endorsing Jana Zanny Pashi. Jana Zanny Pashi, Jana! I'm always getting yelled at because it's a Janer and a Janer, and I'm always getting yelled at, which one I'm supposed to say the right way. But I love Jana Zanny Pashi, and I'm hoping that she becomes the, the School Committee Vice Chair, but I don't think she wants it. And who else did we leave out? Angelo over there, our good friend on South Broadway in Lawrence. You guys know you were watching me one night when I was chasing police cars. I was actually chasing Mike Samar one night down Lawrence Street, and a guy T-boned me, right? I mean, just slammed right into my car and spun me around, took out both doors on my passenger side. I brought it to Angelo, got it back a week or so later. You look at my car in the parking lot, you go, you cannot tell my car has been in an accident, that's how good he is. Give Angelo a call. I'm gonna give somebody else an opportunity to ask a question. We're gonna go a little bit over, that's okay, Ed?
Can I answer my own question, though?
Yeah, how much is a little bit?
Like 10 minutes?
Yeah, of course.
Tom, can I answer my-
If it's short, yeah.
Yeah, it is short. And I don't disagree with the rest of the team here, but we need a, a city architect, someone that knows zoning, someone that can come in and redistrict the city in, in a positive manner. You have the Loop, you have an area there that could be well-developed, you could talk about tax incentive. You make the money on the sales tax, you make the money on the income tax. You have now the PMA location that's going up for sale. It's in between two major hospitals, a great school system. I would love to see a satellite university come up here, Salem State, Northern Essex, or UMass Lowell. I would love to talk with them. They just did a beautiful building in Haverhill. And, and Lawrence has the beautiful campus now in Northern Essex. I, I think Methuen can do that too. I think, I don't want that city property, or that property, to go to waste. There's so much history in that location. That and the Loop should be the top priorities in the next council when it comes to how you're gonna build your economic development. Because if you have someone that comes in there and demolishes that history, and builds apartments, or builds a commercialized zone area there, you lose all that history of Methuen, and that's what Methuen is priding themselves on currently, is protecting the history, protecting the integrity, protecting the honor of the city. And those properties alone are the jewel of the city.
Jessica, I'll let you go next. If you have a question for one person, because we don't have enough time to go to questions for everybody.
Is it possible to negotiate a quick question with a quick answer for all the candidates?
If it's quick.
Okay. So I was proud to put forward a resolution for a financial impact statement last year. And that resolution said that we must know the cost of every single item before we actually vote. Not just union contracts, but including union contracts, every contract. Anything that costs the city money, we have to know exactly how much it costs. It's common sense, makes sense, should've already been a rule. Not everyone even actually voted for it. And I was contentious. Now the actual following of it is contentious. Some people don't wanna follow the rule that we passed. So my question is to all of my fellow candidates, would you abide by the financial impact statement rule? And, you know, how would you have voted at the time?
I think you need to have financial impacts statements for everything. And whether it's a cent or a million dollars, I think that you need to know exactly how every single decision being made is going to impact the city. And that's a communication with the CAFO and with all the other people within City Hall to make sure that those are accompanied by everything. And then that just becomes protocol. It shouldn't be like an extra, like, oh, that's a nice to have.
Absolutely.
That's part of the contract. And it shouldn't be, oh, this is missing. That should be accompanied by every single piece that goes in front of the council. And until it does, it should be tabled and moved on. I said, and that, make sure that within City Hall, everyone's doing everything right to make sure that all that information's getting out to people, and everything's being transparent to the public.
I will never support a contract unless it has a corresponding financial impact statement. If it doesn't have a financial impact statement, you're getting a no from me.
And I would agree. Every, every contract should have an impact statement. I mean, even any order that you make for supplies, anything that involves the city's budget, you should have an impact statement, which I'll never amend to forget about it either. Because I know there's been a few cases on this council that they've tried to amend to let go of the impact statement and take the word of the department head that came in. And I, I would never do that.
I, I have one targeted question, Jess, for you. I watched that meeting when Tim Sheehy, great guy, nobody's questioning his honor or his integrity, but he got up and he's doing math at the, at the microphone. And, and you're saying at the, at the table, I can't vote for this even though I pro, I agree with everything you're saying, but I can't vote for it without an impact statement. And you voted no on that position, and then the next position came before you, and you voted yes without an impact statement. And I just want you to explain to me and the people at home, like, what, what happened?
Can you describe, this conversation is new to me, can you describe what you're talking about?
Yeah, the night, the night that-
Right, no, I heard that part, yeah. And what was the, what was the next vote?
It was for another, it was for another position. It was either a raise or another position.
Are you sure it was an appointment? I actually don't remember what it was.
Yeah, I think it was.
It was an appointment for a lieutenant, I think it was. And there was an impact sta, there was no impact statement. But I'm pretty sure there was like three or four people in that council that was going to vote on that. Taking the word of the chief, who I, I, I think he's an amazing man, great guy, does a lot for the city. But I, at one point, I thought the city was going to approve that, that position, because there was no impact statement to it.
So I actually am not even 100% sure what you're talking about. I know that myself, when I wasn't able, so for me, when I'm not able to get something passed, whether it's an amendment, a table, or anything like that, a lot of times I'll say, you know what, this is what I wanted to do, and this is what I believe should happen. But if there is no support of that, I'm not gonna hold it up. Like, for example, at the meeting on Monday, we had a discussion about how we were going to, at the last minute, they wanted to change a revolving fund so that the, the mayor could basically take money out of it whenever they think that it's an emergency. And I disagreed with that. I found out about it hours before the meeting, it wasn't on the agenda. The whole thing was just so improper to me. And I put forward a couple of different amendments and voted on other amendments to change how it would do. So it would still pay for what it needed to pay for, but not change the revolving fund. And while I lost the, that effort, and it didn't work out, I then voted in favor of the EPA, because I believed in what the point of what it was for. And even though I'm basically saying I'm rushing something that I didn't agree with how it was done, it was already done, it was already voted on, and you leave that stuff behind. That's not something that you take out retaliation or anything like that for people in the council. I've seen way too much of that, where people say, I'm just mad at how this conversation went down, so I'm voting no. I don't like you, so I'm voting no. And I think that's so negative and not the right way for me. It's always about analyzing the situation and moving from there.
Nick, a targeted question to you. I wanna give you an opportunity. During the, during the primary debate, we had a conversation about the Judy Scannell situation, and the overspending and all of that. And I know that kinda weighs heavy on you. I wanna give you an opportunity though, because one of the things that you said, and I don't think you clarified it, and I've had a lot of people ask me about it, and I didn't really have an answer for them. Why is it that when you were told about what was going on behind the scenes, that you didn't tell the school committee? I mean, I know you said you told the chairman, but he's only one member. Why, why didn't you come out and tell the entire committee? Why didn't you come up at a, at a public meeting and just say, hey, this is what's going on?
You know, now that I think back at it, you know, maybe I would've done it different, but I didn't. So at this point in time, my mindset of the situation was that I personally think that my job on the school committee is when I'm at that table. When I was at a restaurant, and it was late at night, and someone telling me something off the cuff, I'm not gonna use that against them on a professional level, nor would I use that on any of you guys on a professional level, if you said anything to me at a late night at a bar or a pub. But what I did do was sit down with the chair and the superintendent. And it wasn't 10 days, it was five minutes after I called, that they said, if you don't believe us, or well, if you don't believe me, from the superintendent's point of view, come on in and I'll show you what the numbers are. At the time, we had the budget book from the year prior, the numbers weren't too far off, but it was enough to worry. And I said to the mayor, who was only in the office for three months at the time, which it wasn't the February 12th meeting, it was the March 12th meeting, they were both on the 12th, so excuse me for mixing the meetings up, though. I asked the superintendent to talk towards exactly what we discussed, and it was the special ed and transportation. Now do note, we have had people in office that are not politicians, department heads, that are doing things across the city that we can only make decisions on based off of what they tell us, because we should be entrusting them in their position. And at that time, I did not think it was important for me to talk to Ann Goslin, who's the business manager, and reprimand him, or go to his boss, that went around. And at that time, after having that discussion on the floor, Ann didn't come back to me, nor did he go and talk to anyone. And the only reason why this recently came out was because he was applying for other jobs. This is the first time I've heard that I didn't do the right thing if that wasn't the right thing. So no one from that end of the business questioned it, didn't go to anyone else if they didn't think I was doing the job. And personally, I, I'm in HR. When someone comes to me and says, Nick, my boss is doing something, there's, there is laws that you have to protect him. And he's not my employee, he's hers. But it's my right-
Well, he's all of our employees. In fairness.
In fairness, he's taxpayer, you're right. But I thought by getting it out in the open that we would have to go to City Council due to this spending. Personally, at the time, I thought that was the best decision. Again, maybe I would've gone to someone else to have that conversation, one of the other committee members, but at the time, it was the best decision for me.
DJ, and we're gonna, we're gonna wrap up after I get to Steve Angelo. What is your number one priority? Let's say the election is over, it's now January 4th or 6th, you've been sworn in, you've elected your council president, vice president, and now you're getting ready to have your first substantive meeting. What, what's the one thing you put on the agenda? What's the one thing that you wanna focus on first?
So my number one objective, and this is something that I know several councillors are already focusing on. I wanna harp on this and keep it going. We need to make our government more transparent and accountable. And I think the best way to begin the process of doing that, the best way to prevent the taxpayers from having to experience the nightmare that we've had to experience over the course of the past few years, is to bring in an independent outside firm to conduct a thorough audit of every department over time. And I think that we need to begin looking at that right away. We haven't done thorough audits, I don't think, of any of the departments in a long time. I know the last audit, for instance, of the police department, was done thoroughly when McDougal was chief, last management study.
I think it was in high school back then, maybe?
Yeah, so I, I just, I want to open up the books, and I wanna be able, for all of us, to have a look at everything, simply because we need to get back to making decisions that are based on numbers, statistics, rather than just emotions. And I think that if we start there, we can have a very productive progression of events on that council.
Steve Angelo, you have no alliances, right? You were saying how you're not, you're not in any team, you're kinda running on your own. It's elect, the election's over, you've won. And you've already elected your council president, and now you're facing your first meeting. You don't have any real alliances with anybody, right? You're not in the Saber crowd, you're not in the anti-Saber crowd. You didn't support Perry, you didn't support Canaan, but you're gonna now have to work with all these people. What is the number one thing that you wanna do on the council? What's the one thing that you're gonna put on the council agenda to, to move forward as your number one priority?
As my number one priority is to look more into more grants throughout the city, and looking to create a long-term plan in terms of finding auxiliary finances to bring it back to Methuen. And I think that we've lost vision of that over the past few years, where we've fallen behind a little bit. And I think that as we go forward, I think that we need to have that as a topic, to bring the Community Development Board in front of us, and to make sure that we have the same vision with the mayor, with the council. And that we all know that we're going out there and trying to chase every single dollar that we can, that is at the state and federal level. That's tax money that we've already spent here as Methuen residents. And if we're not chasing after every single cent, and we're not trying to bring back as much of that money as we possibly can, we're doing it to service to the community.
Great. I love these answers. I really would've loved it more if you guys had fought with each other like the West End councillors did. And, and the, and the Central District councillors did a pretty good job fighting with each other too. But I do appreciate the professionalism here tonight. I was expecting a little- I was expecting a little more fireworks, but I'm glad that this went the way that it did. I think that we educated people on a lot of subjects that aren't being talked about. I want to give each of you, I'm not going to time it, but be respectful of the time because we're already 10 minutes over, to give your final thoughts on why people should vote for you, what it is that you think distinguishes you from the other candidates. And if you have any, like, events or anything coming up, I know there's not much time left for the election, but if there's anything you want to promote, I'll give you a chance to do that. And why don't we start with, while we started with DJ, let's start with DJ at the end, too.
Sure. So again, I'm DJ Borogad, and I hope to earn one of your three votes on Tuesday, November 5th, for councillor-at-large. I'm the type of person who believes that when we take an oath of office, that oath follows us no matter where we are and no matter where we go. And I think it's important to always remember that our first and only priority should be to address the needs of the taxpayers and residents of the city of Methuen. We don't belong on the payroll for any department or what have you. Our bosses are the taxpayers. And I'm going to keep that at the forefront of my mind every time I take a vote on the council floor. I hope that a takeaway is that I'm going to try to be a voice of reason on the next council. I'm going to work on building collaborative relationships with, no matter who is elected mayor or to the council, we need to move forward together in order to get Methuen to where we need to be. We need to be more proactive and focus on addressing the very critical issues that are in front of us. And we need adults in the room to do that. And I hope to be one of those people. And thank you very much for your consideration.
All right. Jessica Funicaro, or is it Funiciato? I was told by an Italian lady recently that I was saying your name wrong.
Yeah, well, you are, but it's okay. I say Funicaro to everybody, so that's easier. So I think, since there's a lot of things that I wanted to talk more about that we hadn't discussed yet, I think what I'm going to do is just use this opportunity to talk about how I have actually represented Methuen residents for the past year and a half. There have been a lot of difficult things that have come up, and I think...
Can you just pull your mic in? I'm sorry.
Sure.
Keep pushing it out.
So how I have shown that I can be useful to residents as one of the nine counselors is that whenever there was a fight that came up, I wasn't afraid to find out what the right thing to do was and actually go out and do it. I wasn't afraid to write resolutions, especially ones that honestly sometimes made people upset. There are things like audits and investigations. I proposed and wrote a resolution for us to do that. I believe it was the right thing to do. And I fully support all of the state agencies that are investigating what truly happened to Methuen. I think some things that happened in 2017 with the previous council were really disappointing. And I'm fully behind us finding out what happened and us learning from it and making sure that it never happens again. Again, the financial impact statement, that actually did pass, and that was something that I'm really proud of, and I hope moving forward that Methuen keeps, continues to keep. I also wrote and put forward a resolution for us to investigate what happened on the Community Development Board, to have allegations of threats happen on a city board, and to put before the council for us to do something about it, and to have the council say that we're not going to do that. It was so, it was so disappointing. I don't think that that's what residents want. I think that residents want us to be having a full investigation of everything that happens when politicians and elected officials, government, doesn't act the way that we want them to act, the way that we've been talking about here with respect and honor and professionalism, they need to be held accountable. And I wish that that had happened more in this past year and a half, but I wasn't afraid to take on those challenges, put my name towards them, do the hard work of researching, putting them together, and putting it forward. The Police Superior Officers Contract. Before things got really haywire, I put forward a resolution that said, let's get everybody back to the table. You know, it was five pages of how specifically this will happen in a fair manner. It had representation from all parties that are involved, both unions, both the people who would be laid off, and the people who were talking about their salaries, the superior officers, and as well as members of the council and a bunch of other things. And that was an opportunity for us to see if there is any common ground, if we could solve this without huge financial impact, and not spend the next year and a half turning off businesses who want to be here with our contract disputes.
And the council voted no on that.
The council voted no on that, yes. So, you know, those are things that, you know, it's uncomfortable sometimes to stand up for how you are going to solve some of these bigger problems. I think sometimes people want to talk about it, take the middle of the road. I'm not afraid to stand up for what I believe in. And I have gone to 400 events over the past year and a half talking to residents. I've had 15-plus office hour events where I've had people come in, just say, ask me open questions. What do you need? What's going on in your communities? Senior centers, coffee shops, while I was an elected official, not just during election time. And I feel like because of that, I am representative of what a large amount of people in Methuen do want. They do want us to get to the bottom of these issues. You know, it's not just about solving the negative things, it's about how do we actually move forward from them? Because you can't just wipe away some of these serious, serious allegations throughout the city. Because how do you trust those officials in the future? If somebody did something to violate the public trust, they should not have a job. They should not be in office, they should not be a city employee, they should not have that position of honor to be able to do more wrong things for the community. So I believe, and again, as we mentioned earlier, I believe that we all need to work together. I'm looking forward to, if elected, sitting down and talking with all of the people who win in all of the races, and say, how do we move forward on all these things? What do we at least have in common? What we have in common, let's at least do that, instead of staying mired and not doing anything. I want us to work together, maybe we don't agree on everything, but if we agree on some core issues, let's do that and move the city forward, because the city needs us, it really does.
Nicholas DiZoglio, you're a member of the Methuen School Committee. You served, what, two terms?
This will be, yep.
And I'd like to give you your last opportunity to, this might be the last time people hear from you before the election, so make your final pitch.
First off, I got to say, it's been an honor and a privilege to serve the Methuen Public School community. The students, I take pride in seeing those kids smile every day and playing sports that they are and the arts that they are a part of, getting an education. The teachers are hardworking. We've worked on seven union contracts this year, none are being disputed as of right now. And my professionalism with my committee and the administration, and I think the other councils, shows that I am someone that can cross the aisle, have the conversation, talk, shake the hand, and either disagree or agree. My professional level on my career has engaged me into working on large contracts, mostly on statement of works, SOWs or POs. I've seen budgets between $40 and $50 million on my own desk. I've worked on contracts and saved upwards of $4.5 million in procurement costs because I know where to cut. I don't look at a line item, though, and see a number. I see families, I see people putting food on their table, paying for college educations, you know, paying for their homes here in Methuen. I don't look at it as a line item. I do take each vote as a personal knowledgeable vote, and I've worked very closely on making sure that Methuen Public Schools is, I'm leaving it a little bit better than it was when I got on it. So I'm proud to say that we're at $11 million more than what we originally had. Unfortunately, the city is in the situation it is in, but I think it's because we didn't have the right systems in place. We didn't have fiscal responsibility on the city level. We took money, put money in places to safe haven it for a year or two, and then brought it over to other departments. I think we need accountability in all offices. I think you need to restructure the titles of each of these positions. I think you should look at, instead of adding directors and just adding another head in the office, we should start from the top position and work its way down. I think you have a lot of issues ahead of us. We've been so stuck in the last two years that, again, we've neglected the future. Yes, Methuen Day has been a great process, I'll give you props on that. But we are looking at an economic issue here. Commercial property, commercial revenue is only 15%. We really need to raise that. That is going to be my number one priority on day one, is working with Bill Buckley on how we can increase that over the next five to 10 years. Because my infrastructure and capital improvement plan, I've sat down with each department at Methuen Public Schools, with Bob Vogler, Bruce Stell, and Ann Goslin, and we went line by line online and what we need. We don't have a lot of new buildings in the city. A lot of our infrastructure is failing, a lot of our building infrastructure is crumbling, our roads are in need of repair. And again, we need grant writers. There is millions and millions of dollars of grants out there that cities are capitalizing across this Commonwealth. Methuen can even tap into one. And when we did tap into it, we gave the money back, and I was against that. We needed to spend every dollar that this city can receive in any improvement. And I think it starts with our senior centers, our schools, our public works buildings. I would like to see the police and fire under one location and centralized. I would like to see City Hall finally use the grants that they had for the last two to three years, use it, instead of taking the technology that they did out of it. I think you need those systems, but there are also other funding ways that we can do it. And I'm, again, I'm not a bot vote. So what I will say is, I hope to be one of your three votes on November 5th. And if you would like to know more about me, my website is www.dizoglioformethuen.com. And Tom, thank you again for hosting these debates.
You're welcome. Sorry, Steve, we have no time for you. Nick talked too long. I'm just kidding, I'm just kidding.
I talk really fast anyways, if people picked up on. So, Tom, thank you again for having us here. And I want to say, I want to thank Two Guys Smoke Shop for having us as well. I said, it's been a great opportunity.
Especially Royal Screen Printing, they're good guys.
And Royal Screen Printing, they have great shirts. So, once again, my name is Steve Angelo. As I said, I'm one of the counselors, or hopefully going to be one of your counselors come January here in Methuen. I'm not a grandstander. I said, I don't feel comfortable being the person up here in the spotlight, but I will be the person down in the trenches who's going to be working for you every single day. I said, I am someone who will go into every single conversation with an open mind and genuine heart, and I will be there for every single vote on every single council table. I have no conflicts, I have nothing that will get in the way of me representing you as voters here in Methuen, and I hope to earn one of your three votes on November 5th.